I can't remember the officer. The spike map wouldn't have worked.
The February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five Auburn City Council Workshop will be called to order. The first item is a presentation regarding tax-acquired property policy, disposal of use of city-owned lots, and privately-owned vacant building registry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just gonna go over really quickly. Many of you were here when I went over the tax-acquired process. Some of you weren't, so I'm just gonna do a quick summary of how we get to the point of a property being tax-acquired or city-owned. So, tax bills are sent to property owners in August. First half is due in September, second half is due in March. In April, after the second half of taxes were due, if there's any remaining balance, we generally send a courtesy notice that there's still an amount due. It's not required by law, but that is an extra step we take when we're able. In May, we send the state statute-required thirty-day notice. And then if it's not paid within that thirty days, a lien gets filed within ten days of that thirty-day expiration. By law, we must file the lien with the Registry of Deeds, and certified copies are sent to the owners and mortgage holders, if there are mortgage holders to it. Once a lien is filed, the property owner has eighteen months from that date of lien filing to pay before an automatic foreclosure takes place. A forty-five-day foreclosure notice is sent as a reminding of that impending automatic foreclosure at the end of that eighteen months. If the property still has taxes owed at that time, it automatically forecloses. The city doesn't take any additional steps beyond allowing it to automatically foreclose. The former owner of that property, at that time they're now the former owner, has thirty days after that automatic foreclosure to pay off still. So it's really nineteen months that they have to pay that off. So it's before the city does anything with the property. By the end of this process, it's been about two years since the tax was due, before the city takes any steps with the property itself. We do have that thirty-day legal window, but the city leaves that window a little bit longer to make some adjustments for property owners. It's always the intent of the city to have that property remain with the former property owner as long as those taxes are paid up-to-date. So only after all those steps are taken do we move forward with those foreclosures. And a side note that evictions are only enforced when there's a safety issue or all other options have been exhausted. I think we've only done two in the last twenty years of actual evictions. So I've also come to you to discuss the new law, which was referred to LD, as LD one-oh-one. It's referred to a few different things, as a few different things now, but in short, there's requirements related to tax-acquired properties. A lot of those requirements include things like listing an itemized cost. So if there was any legal action, staff time, taxes, fees, that all needs to be itemized and listed out for these properties in order for us to consider it acquired. And that itemized cost now has to be filed with the Registry of Deeds. So for each of these properties, we have to do that work of itemizing the cost, filing it with the registry. There's also requirements for how we may dispose of the properties. So our former policy, which was revised and brought to council and approved in twenty seventeen, now needs to be revised again in order to better match that new state statute. So some of those requirements include if we are to retain the property for a city use, municipal use, we have to get the assessed, not assessed, appraised, thank you, the appraised values. We have to get appraisal done on the property. The appraised value of that property minus any of those itemized costs to the city. And if there's any remaining funds after that, it gets sent to that former property owner. All of that needs to be filed with the registry. We have to keep records of every step of this process for each of these properties. And that's if we're going to retain the property for municipal use. If we determine that the property is not suitable for municipal use, there are also requirements for how we're going to dispose of that property. The new law requires using a broker. So we must retain a broker and use their services to sell the property. In past, we would do a closed bid, and our minimum requirement for that bid would be whatever was owed to the city to try and make the city whole. So now we have twelve months with a broker to sell that property at the highest amount possible. Then and only if we haven't sold that property with the broker, may we dispose of it in however is seen fit by the municipality. So that's a summary, but there are a lot more rules related to that, some intricacies. So we have legal counsel looking at our policy that I mentioned was updated in twenty seventeen to better match these statutes and include some of these requirements. One of these that we are by law required is that broker. And that's where I'll hand it off to Glenn to discuss.
So where I come to the table is when we start talking about that broker system and that twelve-month period and making sure that we are able to get the maximum amount possible. But also, when we looked at, do we want to keep it for our own use, municipal use? So the first time I saw the city-owned list, it was over a hundred properties, which got trimmed down pretty dramatically when you took all the parks and the Riverwalk and those parcels out, which got down to under eighty. And then after that, we had a group of people within the city really look at it, see what had some value or not value, get that down to around thirty properties. And now we're looking at about a half a dozen properties that makes sense to put on the market and try to do something with or retain for municipal use, such as the properties for the Housing First Project that we looked at, keeping those. Fortunately, those have been around a long time, and actually, we owned those for the most part. So we have drafted an RFP that is pretty simple, but it really is getting at what is the council see as what they'd like to see on that property? So we have a way to be able to put in there, if we're looking for housing, what type of housing? Does it meet the zoning requirements of that area? There'll be a process, get some public input as well, so that when that goes out for RFP, if it hasn't sold through the first process, we'll be able to have some control over that and make sure that it's used in a way that would work for the community. We've also drafted an RFP for the appraisal services. Obviously, it would be very cumbersome to go up for an appraiser every single time you wanted to put one of these properties on the market or to find out the value. So as one of the first steps after acquiring it will be to have it appraised, and we'll have an appraiser that's on retainer, basically. Won't cost anything unless they do the work, but we'll know who we can call, and that would be for like a twenty-four, thirty-six-month period, and then we'll revise that. So then what it really comes into is what is the rest of the ordinance is gonna look like? And that's why I'm here to talk about those parts.
Take this one. So Eric's not able to be here tonight, but one thing that Eric and his team have been working on is the exploring vacant, abandoned, privately-owned buildings. And so this is not the lots, as Glenn was talking about, that we have available, that we need to decide how best to sell and transfer those. These are actual abandoned or vacant buildings. As you know, those are the properties that we often see blight. We often see criminal activity. We often see weather damage. Code consistently works through chasing down property owners, mortgage companies, whoever's in charge of these properties on a regular basis. And they do become challenging. The couple of things that I wanted to highlight within this, this will be, Council, if the desire is to move forward with this ordinance, then then we'll present a draft ordinance for your consideration in the future. And so I think you're seeing, you know, you're gonna see action from Kelsey on a revised policy as it pertains to what she just presented. You're gonna see an RFP draft that's gonna come forward from Glenn. And then third leg of the stool is, how do we address some of these vacant, privately-owned buildings? And we want to ensure that they're, you know, this is, it's equitable, it's just, it's clear for a property owner to ensure that we are addressing these issues consistently across the board. The, what we're looking at in the ordinance is language pertaining to what percentage even of a building that might be vacant or unused that's creating a part of the challenges. And so mostly that's as it pertains to commercial. There's a difference between an approach that we'll take with commercial properties and then what we would take with a single-family residence that's vacant, resident that's vacant, and action that we need to move forward with. And what we are identifying in the ordinance is that this building is vacant and considered abandoned for at least sixty days. And so within that sixty-day period, there's several different criteria that we would identify as what might be an indicator that this, this building is vacant. We often see it. Some of you call me on these on a regular basis. This is, you see trash, furniture, things just pulled out of the, out of that building, abandoned up near the side of the road or around the building. Those are all items that the code will work through, especially on vacant buildings. And then you also see open doors, open windows, where individuals are gaining access into a building, which then becomes a hazard. Or the building itself is not weatherized to deal with damage from rain or inclement weather. And so, so that becomes a challenge as well for us. So the, if a property owner has that building and it's vacant, and it'll be vacant for more than sixty days, then the ordinance would require that individual or business or mortgage holder to apply for a permit. The permit would then allow that building to be vacant. There's a standard permit that would be issued, and that means that the code enforcement has inspected, and it meets all the criteria that we need to ensure that the building's secure, we have contact information. There's no, no immediate concern of public health, safety, those matters. And then there's an interim vacant building inspection permit. And this would be that the property was inspected and these are the items that were found to be not in compliance. The individual would then need to ensure that it's boarded up or whatever the issue might be, make sure that's taken care of, and before a permit's issued. We would put language in here where the permit could be extended. Obviously, a building may not have occupancy within sixty days. That's not the intent of this. But it's, the intent is to ensure that there's eyes on the building and there's communication with whoever is responsible for that building to ensure that we have that communication. That's probably one of the biggest issues that we deal with, is just there's no contact person for a building. And so having that, making that available will be, be critical for us. The, we will, we'll propose two different fees, one for the commercial, one for privately-owned. We will also have language within the permit that allows for an inspection. Inspection will be upon notification, but then also if there's an imminent threat to public health or safety, just like any other building currently, fire or police, to be able to gain access, then they would provide that. And then, and then it's, all that information is listed into our registry. So we're there. We know where our vacant buildings are and how best to, how best to manage those. We would, there's several communities that have these, this type of policy or ordinance within their communities. So we are taking a look at all those different types of ordinances, pulling which ones seem to fit best for the city of Auburn and how best for us to manage it. So, you know, now's an opportunity for you to give us feedback as we start preparing these documents. Most of Kelsey is directed and governed by state statute, but Glenn and I at least have some, some leeway in developing the ordinance and the RFP. So that's it, Mayor.
Questions from the council? Councilwoman.
Do you have a template of an ordinance that, is this something that you've found in your meetings with other managers that this is similar to, it's been done in other municipalities?
Yeah, you can look at, I think Augusta probably has probably one of the most up-to-date ordinances, but Augusta, Sanford, both have some that we've been looking at. Bangor also has language, but we really think Augusta really aligns probably best with us. And so we're using that as a framework, and then we'll build around it as it, we want to make sure it works within our operation and what's best for our community.
Other questions or comments from the council? Councilwoman.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Do we have an idea, you said about this sort of acquired permit, of what that permit would cost individuals that apply for it?
You know, I think there's, there's work being done right now by the Ad-Hoc Committee on fees, but what we would provide is, it'll be set by the council, but we would provide what that looks like for other communities. Currently in Augusta, it's two hundred dollars for commercial and a hundred dollars for residential.
Second, oh, sorry. Oh, thank you. My second question is, just a clarification. In regards to the buildings with respects to landlords and individual units, will this affect them if they've had a tenant move out? Would they have to apply if they have an individual unit? I just want to make sure that's clarified, so there probably maybe, this will come up and a lot of landlords will have questions. Oh, they had a tenant move out, and then do they have to apply because they have a vacant unit?
Yeah. Yeah, the language is pretty clear that it would have to meet a certain square footage percentage or something along those lines. Because we do have some properties that, there might be a business that's operating in one half of the building, and the rest of the half of the building is damaged by weather, closed off, boarded up, not being used. Then that would, that would then dictate a permit and a plan on how they're gonna either secure that or how they'll move forward to demo that. Some of this is all that preventative work so that we're getting ahead of this, so it's not just coming to us when a bank abandons the property and then we're left holding the, the building for demo. The city's been spending a great deal of money for demo on a lot of properties over the years, and this allows a mechanism to try to manage that, mitigate as much as possible, so that when it does come time that that building might need to be demoed, we're already moving that issue forward on the existing property owner before it transfers to us.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Weiser just asked a similar question to what I was gonna bring up, which was, is the intent of this to, I mean, how do you differentiate between a commercial business owner who's got sixty percent of their strip mall turnover and it's vacant for sixty days? Is it the intent to have this person register in with the city? Or is that not the intent of this ordinance, and language will try to separate those?
Yeah, and the language will try to separate that. I think that it's, there's, there's probably about, some of the drafts have about six or seven categories that they must also meet, not just vacant, but has to be demonstration of blight, weather damage, open windows, doors, those kind of things. So they have to hit those other items as well.
Yeah, that makes me feel better, because I'd love to know that a landlord who's playing by the rules and make sure those things are good to begin with would not have to enter this channel.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman.
Is this gonna be primarily complaint-based, complaint-driven? Or are we gonna be cruising around looking? Because I can think of buildings that have been vacant and don't seem to be a problem. You wonder why it's vacant, but like a single family out in the country somewhere.
Yeah, I think it'll be both. There'll, there'll be a lift to manage this as well. And so, so that individual within code, we have, we know that we're at a tipping point when it comes to code currently. We're basically just managing the best that we can with complaints currently. There's no proactive measures that really take place. We don't have, we just don't have that bandwidth with the amount of issues that they're working through and the amount of complaints that we receive and the amount of follow-up. This is everything from, well, we heard it at the last council meeting, right? We had, we had a citizen come in and talk about vehicles and basically a garage operating out of a repair or body shop out of somebody's driveway and the impact to that neighborhood. You know, those are honestly, that's driven by complaints. There's, there's no proactive measures that are taking place. There's no going back and taking a look at three months ago, what were the complaints? And now let's follow up on those to see if that's been addressed or if they've started back up again. They just don't have that capacity to be able to do that. You know, we could, we could bring in probably two other staff members and fill their forty hours every single week with just the amount of inspections that we know of. And so, so there's a bit of lift on this. There'll be a management piece. We'll talk about that. We'll certainly talk about that in the budget. And then, but then there's, we're creating some space within that workload to be able to do some of that other preventative work.
Counselor Milk.
What about, you know, do you see falling down barns on people's property, on farmland and things like that? Would this be addressed? Is this, is that something that would, these people would have to be worried about? Because you see them sometimes, there's a generation, a couple of generations have the barn that's, no one's used and it's falling down.
Yeah, I think, you know, the language talks about garage and outbuildings, but it's really specific mostly to, are they being occupied? And so, so I think that, that would, or had they been occupied, are they currently being occupied by someone who's not supposed to be in the building? So that type of, we have those buildings right now, right? Where there are people squatting in those buildings and shouldn't be.
If someone's got a half-falling-down barn that was two generations ago, that's not gonna be, that's not something.
That's not the priority of this.
Counselor Callen.
So you've addressed some of this. So you talked about, you know, there's some preventative nature of this and the costs. So are you anticipating a return on investment where, you know, if you had to hire two more, you had to hire more staff, are you expecting that there's going to be some positive returns on that or to what degree of that?
Yeah, staff is gonna, excuse me, do some preliminary numbers based on what do we, we have a, we have some idea of what we have out there for vacant buildings currently. We'll get a sense of some revenue offset, but that revenue offset's not even gonna, it's not gonna really, really address this. This is more, it's more value add, added by having this type of program than it is a revenue, revenue offset.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Gary.
Just one other thought. We're doing a reevaluation. Is that a possible opportunity possibly to identify some of these lots? Or is that outside of their contract?
You know, I'm not sure. I can check into that. I mean, I'm not, I'm sure we'll get some feedback on what they've found when they've gone out, and then we can see what we could pull from that.
Counselor Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am sort of concerned with the tax-acquired property policy. If somebody is incapacitated or gets incapacitated during the process, is there a mechanism in place that you go to that person and explain to them what's actually going on? Or locate another family member that can intercede to try to figure out what they can do and can't do?
Do you mean if, if we determine that it's vacant, or are you talking about it's, it's the tax, only the tax-acquired?
Just the tax-acquired properties.
So with tax-acquired properties, we're required to send all of these notices. That's what we do. We don't know the inner workings of someone's personal life, so we don't have a mechanism to say if someone is incapacitated in the hospital, for example. We don't know that. So we send the notices. We hope that, we would hope that somebody in their family, as you're saying, you know, that we could reach out to them. We would hope that those family members would be helping to take care of their properties and see these notices and be able to check in for them. But we don't have a mechanism to track down what's going on in someone's personal life. The only thing we can do is attempt to find their last known address. Short of hiring a private investigator, we wouldn't be able to find them if they're not staying in their home at that time.
I've had a constituent that had fallen behind. I mean, he was a senior. He fell behind. He got hit with a brain bleed stroke. And I don't know where the notices were sent to, but towards the end of it, before the city basically said, whoops, we, we've already sent your property to their, their committee that disposes of properties. He'd never got any emails or, or physical letters in the mail.
So if I remember correctly, I know what property you're talking about, is one that we had spoken about. And all notices were sent to the last known address of that person. We did not know that that person was hospitalized for an extended period. There was a family member involved. That was an interesting situation, so we could certainly discuss situations. But if something comes up, as in that example, we do have things that are required by statute as well as through our own policy. The end goal is always to have the taxes paid and remain with that, that property owner. Now, there is a tax requirement, right? So there are tax bills and you are required to pay them. But there are, there's poverty abatements, there's other types of abatements that can be applied for. There's tax relief through the state. So there are some mechanisms in place, but that's, there's an additional discussion about, you know, other things that could be done. And I know the council's discussed some tax relief options as well. But for this particular policy, it basically discusses what we can do. And I think I mentioned that even though that's an eighteen, really nineteen-month period, the city doesn't do anything with the property until it's been at least two years. So twenty-four months after that initial tax was due, when that lien was filed, actually. So not even when it was initially due. It's a year and, year and three months after it was initially billed, before a lien gets filed. And then it's nineteen months from there by statute, but twenty-four months from there before the city does, makes any decisions. And even then, that's really just city staff reviewing the list. I think Glenn mentioned that as well, where that's part of our, our policy is for city staff. There's an internal committee that goes over the properties. We find out if the property is occupied or not. If it isn't occupied, the process is a little bit different than if it is occupied. But again, if somebody's not in the home because, that example you exused for, we wouldn't know why they are or not in the home. It would look vacant to us. But we send those notices.
A few follow-up questions on Counselor Gary's point. If a homeowner notifies the city that they have a different contract, contact address than the physical location, you can make notice to a different address, correct?
Yes. So we do have address change forms. You can also email, but we do prefer a form because that's, that way we have your signature saying, yes, this is my address, not just somebody emailing saying, oh, send it here instead. It's a little bit more official so that we know it's actually you. But we do also have, anything that gets posted with the registry goes to the assessing office. We do keep those records.
And if a person was incapacitated and the court assigned a guardian, you'd recognize the guardian as a person for which you could make the appropriate notice to. Is that correct?
Correct. They would need to show their paperwork from the court, but yes, we would.
And if a family member had power of attorney, they could notify you of that as well, and you can make appropriate notice to a family member or someone that they've given power of attorney to. Is that right?
Correct. So it does rely on those, those members to be the responsible party to reach out to us. But yes, those, that's in place.
Right. Other questions or comments? Counselor Walker.
Mr. Manager, I, I would hope with this program going forward that we would end up with less problems after we've probably caught up with a lot of the problems that are out there right now. Wouldn't you feel that way?
Yeah, I believe so. I think that, like I said, a lot of this is proactive measures to try to address. measures to try to address, um, some really vacant or absentee, rather, property owners. Um, that's where we see most of our challenges. And so if we can get ahead of that early, um, then yeah, I think we can, we can be addressing a majority of the issues that we deal with.
Other questions, comments from the council? Uh, a couple of follow-up questions. So Ms. Earl, um, just to clarify, on the tax-acquired property, the new statute is going to require your office to look back for any of these properties that are in some type of tax-acquired status now, right? This is not just going forward. You're going to have to revisit and gather the information to meet all these new statutory requirements, something that two years ago, five years ago, ten years ago came, uh, into the city's possession. Is that right?
That's correct. So we do have a lot by the middle school, for example, that is just used as a walking path for students. So we determined to retain it because students use it and there was really no other purpose for that lot. We've never done anything with it. We've had it for quite a long time. So it's tax-acquired. I think it's twenty-five years or something like that. We do have to go back. There's no set date. Uh, from here moving forward, it's all tax-acquired property.
Right. And then, Mr. Manager, um, on the vacant buildings, um, I appreciate the discussion around the code enforcement. But my understanding is some of the other cities, there's really two purposes for this. One is to ensure that these derelict buildings are, um, are secured in some way so they're safe. But, um, some of the other cities, uh, have an escalating fee, um, is really is an incentive for them to do something with a building. Um, you know, here in Auburn, um, the latest census report says that ten percent of the housing units in the city are vacant. Lots of those, as I would agree with you, as you've mentioned, are absentee owners. They could be banks or mortgage companies or whatever. So it would be helpful, I think, uh, when we bring this draft before the council to have some discussion about what other cities do to try to push those absentee owners, not just to secure them for code. That's great. That's a good step forward, but it doesn't really do anything about getting these buildings occupied.
Yeah, absolutely. I should have mentioned that the Sanford model and the Bangor model has the escalating that we're looking to incorporate as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions from the council on this particular item? Great. Thanks very much for the presentation. We look forward to the materials coming forward, to the, the policy changes and ordinance changes.
Thank you.
The next item tonight is an executive session pursuant to one MRSA, section four oh five, sub six F regarding poverty abatement, case PA twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one. Is there a motion?
Motion to move in.
Moved by Counselor Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Cowan. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative. The council will be in executive session.
Yep.
Dedication to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the councilors introduce
Thank you. If we could have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Councilor Gary.
Good evening. I'm Belinda Gary, City Councilor at Large.
Rick Whiting, City Councilor, Ward One, the frozen tundra of North Auburn.
Good evening, Tim Cowan, Ward Two, slightly less frozen tundra.
Steve Melks, Ward Three.
Good evening, Jeff Hyman, Mayor.
Good evening, Ben Weisner, City Council, Ward Four.
Leroy Walker, Ward Five.
Adam Platts, at Large.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Thank you. The first item of consent items, we have another number of consent appointments tonight. Catherine Truitt for Complete Streets, Bruce Rio to the Auburn Water District Board of Trustees, Timothy Simpson to Auburn Water District Board of Trustees, Robert Kavanaugh to Auburn Water District Board of Trustees, Grassa Musella to the Auburn Sewer District, Dennis Bergeron to the Auburn Sewer District, and Dave Griswold to the Sustainability and Natural Resource Management Board representing the Community Forest Working Group. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Councilor Gary, seconded by Councilor Walker. The vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Six having voted in the affirmative and one in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is a minutes of the February third, 2025 regular city council meeting. Are there any errors or corrections? Not seeing any, is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Moved by Council Walker.
Second.
Second, seconded by Councilor Cowan. Vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to communications and presentations. The first item is tax increment financing update by Mr. Holmes and Ms. Earl.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm assuming that most of you recall back probably six, eight months ago, we had a workshop on tax increment financing and credit enhancement. And what we really figured out from that workshop and the feedback that we received is that it was complicated. We recognized the spreadsheets that we had put together was difficult, to say the least. We revised it that. We're looking, hopefully it's a lot easier to understand, it's a lot clearer to understand. Kelsey and I have worked together to try to bring together something that I think will work for everybody, but we're really here to find out if that's true, because what we've done, we've taken a subsection of the TIFs. So we've taken just nineteen through twenty-seven, we looked at fiscal years twenty through two-twenty-five, put it into this document, so you can kind of see what we're thinking of, what information we want to provide you on an individual TIF basis, as well as a overall TIF basis. If a TIF has more than one credit enhancement, then there'll be multiple sheets for that. And then the real big thing is the single top sheet that will bring the very most important thing, what we feel was the most important information you want to see onto one sheet, so you can look at eventually historically, or for any given year, what's going on, how much did everything bring in, how much was put out in credit enhancement, things like that. So this is TIF nineteen, and just to kind of give you some idea of why it can be confusing and difficult sometimes, is hard transportation TIF, the council approved it on December fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, the state approved it on December eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, and the start date of the TIF was on July first, two thousand fifteen, which would have been five months prior to the state approving it. So in the documentation, there was a kind of a, you can start from the state, but it had things they wanted to get cleaned up. Because of the way the construction was working and what was happening on the face of the earth, the state gave us that temporary approval, but the actual final approval wasn't until five months after the TIF actually started. So we'll be able to look at those kind of things, you'll be able to see when the TIF ends. And then the big numbers here are the capture percentage. So the capture percentage, if you recall, and you'll correct me if I get this wrong, is the percentage of the new value that's created on that piece of property, within that TIF district. So if it goes up by a hundred thousand dollars, a value, we take forty percent of that, forty thousand dollars, and then that's what we actually look at as part of the TIF. Next thing is, is there a credit enhancement agreement? Not all TIFs have credit enhancement agreements, but you get to know right then, yes or no. What is the credit enhancement value? So if it's stated within the original TIF documents, we'll put it here. If it's unlimited, then we'll put that there as well. How much can the credit enhancement be? This one's a hundred percent, so therefore we're capturing forty percent, and we're giving a hundred percent of that forty percent back to this taxpayer. And then it's like, well, for how long? For twenty years. So that was what was negotiated through the system at that time. Then, the new investment, though, when you look at those TIFs and we bring them to you, you'll always find that within that application, it's what are they proposing to invest in the property to make it go up? And now you can see that they had projected a million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The next important number is the original assessed value, which is that next going on. So originally, that piece of property, the way it sat on the earth on four-one, two thousand fourteen, the year before the TIF actually started, was one million, one hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. That's a certified number, it's in the application, it's pulled from our assessing records, and our assessor has to sign off on that as it's certified. So that kind of gives us the big, important information all in one spot. And then the next question that comes up is like, well, what can you use this money for? Well, in this particular one, it really was what they were going to do with the money instead of us, which is not normally how it's put together, which is again, why it's important to understand this. So they could talk about public roads, design permits, and public ways of safety that they were going to put money into, but the reality is, is that there is no money from, on the city side to do any of that. It's only the work they were going to do within the district, basically adjacent to their property. So if you look to the right, you'll see year zero, that will always be basically the April first prior to the actual start of the TIF. So you then will go out after that, and like I said, we're only looking at a few of the years here, so we can give you a clear picture. So if you look at year five, so on, which would be five years after two thousand fourteen, what the mill rate is, what the original assessed value is, and that number's there simply so it's easier for the system to calculate it. And then the current assessed value, so you can see that that property is now worth four million, six hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred. So the tax revenue, year zero, was twenty-five thousand, forty dollars, year five, a hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-three. So the increased assessed value was three point four million, so therefore the increased tax revenue was eighty-one thousand. Again, the captured value was brought back into it. And then you look at the captured tax revenue, which is the thirty-two thousand, and they get a hundred percent of it. So where it shows there, the captured tax revenue, that's forty percent of the captured tax value. So basically, taking that forty percent value, what was the mill rate, that gives you a number. And then, because this is at a hundred percent credit enhancement, that whole thing will wind up going to, back to this developer. So I'm going to go to the next one, just so we can get a little bit different. So this is TIF twenty, which is sixty-two Spring Street. And again, this one's a hundred percent credit enhancement, because this was a low-income housing development, which kind of made sense, which is why you see no numbers at the bottom, because there was nothing put into the system as there would be any money spent by us. However, they did capture what the term is of twenty years, and the credit enhancement value was set in the documents at a million, seventy-eight thousand, eight forty-nine, and this is actually predicted to be higher than that by the end of the life of it. So there will be about three hundred and twelve thousand bottom line of the white section. Three hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and six is currently projected towards the end of the TIF that the city would be able to put back into something else. So again, what we tried to do is be able to show you in the lines right below the top section where it says cumulative captured revenue, cumulative captured CEA. You'll be able to see, no matter how many years we're out, how much has been actually captured in value total, and then how much has gone to credit enhancement, and how much has gone to the city to be able to do the work, like the Public Safety Building, things like that. And then at the very bottom, where it says projected lifetime, that's actually taking what's currently coming in, averaging it, and then projecting out for the life of the thing, of the thing, of the TIF. As mill rates change, as assessments change, as things change, that number will continue to change every year a little bit, as it becomes more and more accurate. Obviously, in the twentieth year, you can tell exactly what it was, whereas now, it truly is. I'm trying to look out twenty years and try and figure out what we think that will be. Let me jump to... This one is the Auburn Memory Care Center, which is TIF twenty-three. And you can see down here at the bottom where it says professional services and debt service. Can everybody see what I'm talking about right along here? So you can start to see that in year three, we started to have, this is actually debt service, that we started paying on work that we had started to do in that area. We also did, we had capital improvements of one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. So we look at our annual expenses, and then we have cumulative expenses, so you can see cumulatively how much is being spent. And the current balance in that account is a negative one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, because the debt service is greater than what the money coming in. So obviously, that's being pulled out of the overall TIF account, and that will come out and balance out as that debt is paid down. Because our projected life revenue is one point nine million, of which one point one-three million would be for project revenue, and seven hundred and eighty-five thousand is currently projected for the total CEA, but that is going to be capped at six hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. Once they reach that, all those other funds will wind up going back into the TIF for the city to use on the other projects listed in the application. So I'm going to take a breath. I've gone through a couple scenarios. What we're really looking at is, does this make sense? Is it easy to kind of understand and see how we're trying to lay this out? I mean, I'm not really prepared to answer a specific question about specific dollar amounts within this. I don't have all that history with me, more about function.
Council Platts.
Thank you. This is helpful, and I appreciate the format. It's somewhat easy to follow. I guess I just have to round out my full understanding of this. I just have a hypothetical I wanted to pose, and maybe you could give me an answer. So assuming there was a hundred percent credit enhancement agreement, and so a hundred percent of that money was going back to the developer, what would be the reason to do a forty percent capture versus a hundred percent capture versus a seventy percent capture? If the net impact is that the landlord's not paying taxes, it affects the valuation, and I think what we can, it relates to the Homestead Act, can you go into that a little bit?
So part of it is around those other things, but to answer the question specifically, if we're capturing forty percent, so if you pay your tax bill, a hundred thousand dollars, we're capturing forty percent, so therefore forty thousand of that dollars goes over here into the TIF account. Your other sixty thousand still goes into the general fund. Then you get a hundred percent of the forty percent. Okay? So the reason we want to, you know, the reason I advocate for higher capture rates is because that is what protects more value in the county tax formulas, the school funding formula, those types of things. And then if we capture a hundred percent, and then I can give you forty percent, you still get the same forty thousand dollars back, but we've captured more and protected more value.
That's helpful.
Just to follow on to that, though, when these come before the council, it's not a given that it should be a hundred percent TIF, because while the hundred percent is sheltered from the school funding, et cetera, it also limits what you can do with it. You can only, that money is now not available to the general fund, right? You can only do what's in the scope of the TIF, which is why some of these probably didn't end up a hundred percent. Other comments?
I too think this format is very helpful. So I appreciate the effort you guys have put into this. It does, it's laid out very nicely. And just to make sure that I'm understanding what your answer to Council Platts, the only way that a person would pay zero taxes is if we captured a hundred percent and then gave them a hundred percent back.
So, yes, sort of.
Okay.
So, no, 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 it's real simple. So the tax, remember, there's that original assessed value. So the original assessed value is, you know, like on one of them, it's like twenty thousand dollars, so the tax bill was like a couple hundred bucks. You're going to pay that, because we're only talking about the over that number. So anything that's before that, so, you know, in some situations, there was a two million dollar something that you were paying taxes on, you're still going to pay taxes on that, you get nothing back. But that new investment that you made that increased the assessed value by another two million dollars, that's either a hundred or the forty, or wherever you want to play with.
Other questions? There are a couple items here, so just so I'm clear. The block in the lower left, activities projects considered in the TIF, these aren't the potential that was within the scope, these are the particular items that were included in that TIF agreement, correct?
Right. So when you get the TIF agreement, there's a couple of pages normally of different projects that are being thought about within that TIF. Generally speaking, moving forward, what I tend to put in there, obviously, is there be something for economic development and the maintenance of this whole process, so salaries to pay for those kind of things. So pay for economic development, pay for the time that the accounting team and my team puts into doing some of this work, as well as are there particular roads in that area that are going to get more traffic because of that? Or in bad repair to start with, let's make sure we put money into those so they get taken care of. And it's a laundry list that can be added. Right now, obviously with the Public Safety Building, we're using money from the TIFs for that. We can have, use up to fifteen percent of the projected revenues for that. They've added municipal buildings as well, so if, you know, if sometime in the future there was a major renovation to be done on this building, we could set aside money out of TIFs for that as well.
So you're still on memory care, so just, I want to make sure I understand how we're doing this. So in the memory care block, the items that are listed on the left are what was in the TIF agreement that the council approved as allowable uses of that TIF funding.
These are, so obviously, the list, the laundry list is much longer, but like where it says road improvements, I'm taking anything that had to do with roads and put into that block.
Yeah. I just want to be clear, though, there's statutory authority for which the legislature has allowed municipalities to spend TIF revenue on. When I was looking at a lot of these TIFs earlier, some of these are very constrained, and lots of things that are within that statutory authority are not within the TIF.
Correct.
So this isn't capturing, this isn't meant to capture whether it was the full statutory list or some lesser list that the council approved, this is capturing those projects that fell within the list that was in the TIF.
Correct.
Someplace. Okay.
Yep.
And the piece to the right under project expenses, that is the expenditure of the TIF funds, correct?
Correct.
And so when you mentioned the CEA, a separate CEA sheet, I'm assuming, I don't see one in here, but I think what you're saying is we'll have something similar to this bottom half that will say, okay, what was authorized in the credit enhancement agreement, how much money, and what did they spend it on?
Not my intention. What we're listing here...
I think that would be a wonderful idea.
Got it.
And the credit enhancement is not, that's not our project expenses.
Right.
That's the money that they're getting back, so it would be, sometimes there's, for example, there's a TIF that has a revised credit enhancement agreement, so the original, this is an example, because I don't know the exact number of years, but the original ten years were at sixty percent capture, and when it was revised, it was changed to seventy-five percent capture. So for that historical data, you would have two separate sheets to show those two different CEA agreements.
I think for public transparency, the question I get asked a lot is about the credit enhancement agreements, and the question is, how much was authorized in the credit enhancement agreement? What was it authorized for, and what did they spend? So that the public can look at this and say, okay, we did this job with someone's building a building, and they want a credit enhancement agreement, and they tell us that they're going to put in two thousand, five hundred feet of sidewalk on some road. The public wants to know, because that is actually, in effect, a rebate of tax money. So this is great. I think this is a real good step forward, but it would be very helpful if we had something that delineates... that delineated the credit enhancement agreement, the purposes that were authorized, how much money, and if they've expended that. Because some of these, they don't expend the whole thing, right? They say they're going to get a credit enhancement agreement and do the twenty-five hundred feet of sidewalk, and they don't... It doesn't use all the money. So it's important to understand that.
Yes. For those that are actually laid out and are clearly state what that money is for and the purposes, then yes, I can pull it together and take a look at adding that either as an additional sheet or to this.
Yeah. And I think the council understands that you're trying to put this new format together from three prior financial systems in which some of the detail we'd like to see wasn't kept at the time. So for what you can do now, that's great. But going forward, I think it's important to have that.
Absolutely.
Yep. Other questions or thoughts from the council?
Well, I'll simply go to the last page, just so this is what you would see as an overview for, you know, for these TIFs for those years. It lays it out so that you're not looking at all of the other things, but it accumulates it in one place. So obviously, the mill rate stays the same. But now you have the aggregated original assessed value, the current assessed value all aggregated, and you walk down through it. So you can see the cumulative captured revenue was two point two four million dollars, of which one million forty-six thousand was put back in credit enhancement, and one point one nine seven million was actually put into the TIF fund and how it broke down and where those expenses have been captured so far. So that'll be expanded, obviously, for all of the TIFs that are currently active.
Other questions or thoughts? Counsel Mills.
And just to follow up on what you had mentioned, that you're saying legislatively there's a very broad things that a TIF could do. I would think it would make sense in doing our TIFs going forward that we make them as broad as legally possible so that we don't get in those situations where the sidewalk's finished and we got money left over, right?
Yeah, I agree. I think... And I think that the point Mr. Holmes has made in the past is when we do these, everything that's allowable, we put in the TIF agreement, even if we're intending for certain projects. That just gives you flexibility going forward.
Yep.
I think Glenn was prepping you for when you see that next TIF regarding municipal facilities. This building here is twenty years old now. There'll be upgrades that need to take place for certain things here. That five percent, you'll start seeing that incorporated in your future TIFs as well, as well as public safety at fifteen, because that's going to go towards helping us offset that debt service.
Yeah. And just for clarity, not all of our TIFs have credit enhancement agreements. So the project by BJ's, a number of them.
Anything else from the council? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item will be the quarterly corrective action report from the audit, Ms. Earl and Ms. Couture.
So sorry, I should have brought that with me. Hello again. So we have Amanda Couture here with me from the school department. I'm going to let her drive for most of this just because she wasn't here for the last quarterly corrective actions. We focused on the city side. And so she's going to be sharing what the school department has been doing to make those corrective actions from the FY twenty-three audit.
Is it okay if I don't follow this by my own?
Okay. So I had five different items mentioned on the FY twenty-three audit. The first, we were part of the grant account reconciliations concern, and the Auburn School Department has been doing a monthly reconciliation to check our revenues and expenditures. We've been invoicing the state for our federal grants, and our local grants sometimes will come in before we make those expenditures. So of course, that reconciliation's a little quicker. We have the city accounting software to school accounting software. So in the last few months, we have caught ourselves up with our exports. The school business office staff export transactions from our software, which is Profund ADS. We do that monthly. Our goal is going forward to do that by the end of the second week of each month. The city finance staff import those details into Munis, the city software, and then we receive trial balance from the city finance staff, and we create a reconciliation spreadsheet, check on the variances, any differences between the school funds and the city funds. We have to find those, do a little bit of research on our end, and then we make those corrections. We try to make those corrections before the next month's export file is given.
Side note to that, and I know you've heard this before, but the school is working on migrating to the same financial software that the city has. So while there'll still be reconciliations to be done, it won't be this labor-intensive going from one software to another. We won't be exporting from theirs, importing to ours, trying to find where it went wrong. So it'll be more streamlined. But they have begun their migration, so we expect to see that as part of the corrective action as well.
And through this FY twenty-four audit, we've had communication about how we are going to be setting up our accounts going forward so that it's a clean scene there. There's very little reconciliation necessary. It's just understanding what belongs to the school versus the city and being able to report it that way. The next item on my list is school payroll. We had four contracts pulled by the auditors in FY twenty-three out of a little over a hundred of our bargaining unit that they chose, and there were three errors in there. We have been... First of all, we have double sets of eyes on everything at this point. But also, at the end of each year, we do run a balance of every single contracted total to make sure that we have paid exactly that amount, and any variance is taken care of within that fiscal year. So it's usually a week or two that we have to do that check. Another item was our deposits at Edward Little High School being considered untimely at times. We've, in the past, only had one administrative assistant who was in charge of that. So what we've done is we've cross-trained another person. I mean, it makes sense. We also have that person double-checking the numbers of the person that's been doing this for years as well, just to get more experience with them. But really, if that person needs to be out, which is going to happen, then we have a backup person now. So... And then the final thing was our child nutrition cluster. This was one of the very last items. I think it actually is on your list here, too. So what we've done, because the error found was in one of the claims, the monthly claims that our school nutrition director puts in, what we've started doing is he has an admin assistant now that he didn't have before. She scans all the backup in, and before I approve the claim, I double-check the numbers against his Excel spreadsheet.
I'll continue with some of the city side items on here. So Amanda had mentioned the grant accounting software reconciliation. So city staff does have reporting for funds related to CDBG and HUD funding. We've mentioned before that we've changed how some of that is done. We use project accounting now to keep track of each by project code. And I say that like that because some of those terms are used interchangeably. But we use project codes. We are... That's resulting in timely reimbursements as well. I think that was brought up when grant funding was put on hold, and there was a concern about whether or not we'd be able to draw down. And we shared that there was only eleven thousand dollars outstanding for us at that time. So that shows that that is working. But we continue to implement additional processes when it comes to grant reconciliations. There are five or six different softwares because of state and federal funding that we're required to use. So reconciling those with our software, it's just part of what we have to continue doing on a monthly basis to make sure that we're keeping up with that. One of the other items that was mentioned from the FY twenty-three audit was sole source provider procurement compliance. So in short, what that means is if there is only a single vendor that offers a service or product that we are looking for, we have to provide documentation that shows how we came to the conclusion that they are the only vendor or source for that service or product. In the past, that has not always been followed each time. So one of the corrective actions was the purchasing policy that was in place is now strictly enforced. Staff are required to obtain three quotes for anything under twenty-five thousand dollars currently and must enter into competitive bidding beyond that. All purchase orders, which is anything over one thousand dollars at this time, requires attached documentation before being approved. So that's for any purchase. A thousand dollars to twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars requires documentation attached, quotes. And if they are unable to obtain quotes, or if there's a single source or vendor, there has to be documentation that shows that. It can be memo, information from a state government agency, something like that. As long as we have that attached, that purchase order in our financial software, the auditors are happy because we're showing that we're not just taking our word for it. We actually have that document. So you won't see any issues with that in FY twenty-four audit, and you definitely won't see it beyond then. But some of those dollar amounts can be cumbersome. You'll be hearing from me coming... Moving forward about that. An additional item about documentation from FY twenty-three was approvals and supporting documents for journal entries. There's mention of journal entries being done, which means it could be funds being moved from one account to another, or an end-of-year balance being transferred to a start-of-year. So if there's encumbrances, money that's set aside for a certain purchase but hasn't been spent yet, those have to be signed off on. In the past, some of those were just done with no other sign-off and no attached documentation or information as to what that was. So there could be something moved. We always find it. So there's no misuse of funds or things being put where they shouldn't be put. There wasn't just... There just wasn't information attached to it to explain it. So the FY twenty-three audit, some of that extended period that we've experienced was time spent trying to go back and work our way backwards to find where and why. It wasn't listed as misuse of funds. Like I said, we had a clean audit. It was just that there wasn't easy documentation to find. So some of that has been a turnover of staff, but some of it was too much power in one hand, I guess is what I'll say. Just that our financial software had permissions that allowed a single person to enter. So our financial software now has a workflow attached. So that workflow means if I go in and I enter something, I can't just do it just as a finance director. I can enter it, but someone else has to approve it. So I make an entry. It has to go to someone else, depending on the item. It could go to accounting staff or the deputy finance director. They approve that. That approval is now kept on record electronically. If there's a list of entries, we have paperwork that's printed out that shows that list of entries or electronic document, not necessarily printed out. We're trying to get away from paper. But there's a second signature on there. So it does take more time, but in the long run, it's going to take less time because we won't have to go back and work our way backwards from those things. So now documentation must include the reason for the entry and require that second staff member to either review and click approval or review and sign off. That was a really long way of saying we didn't do anything bad, but we didn't show our work. We did our homework. We just didn't show how we got to the answer.
Any questions or comments from the council? No? Thank you very much. We appreciate the report. Thank you very much to the school department for getting caught up on the reconciliations. I know we've been asking about that frequently, and a lot of hard work went into that. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. The next item will be a presentation from the Homeless Committee, their report to the council. And I believe Mr. Billidu and Mr. Lowenstein are going to present.
My name is Bill Lowenstein. I live at the bottom of the hill from Counsel Whiting, where it is quite frozen out in Ward One, and a member of the homelessness committee.
Good evening. My name is Dave Billidu. I'm the co-chair of the Homeless Committee and the options liaison for Uriston and Auburn, part of the response team that goes out and meets with people and tries to get them help and get them set up. I want to start with some background. In March twenty twenty-four, the Mayor's Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness was selected and convened by Auburn Mayor Jeffrey Harmon. The committee has met fourteen times from March twenty twenty-four through January twenty twenty-five to assess the current state of homelessness in Auburn and identify a strategy and priority, activities that the City of Auburn, with guidance from the mayor and city council, could take in partnership with other organizations in the region. Members of the Mayor's Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness are pleased to present this report to the mayor, city councilors, and city manager. Our intent is to provide a framework and set of recommendations to assist in developing a comprehensive approach in addressing the issue of homelessness in our community on both a short and long-term basis. While the City of Auburn cannot and should not be responsible for all aspects of this framework, it is important to view the city's role through such a comprehensive framework. There are many agencies and organizations in our committee already providing the services necessary to address many of these components. At this time, I'd like to list off the members of the committee. Sasha Anas... Anas Thasov, student homelessness, myself, co-chair and part of the response team, Tim Cohen, co-chair of Ward Two City Councilor, Jen Edwards, public health, Peter Floyd, nonprofit, Linda Gary, city councilor-at-large, Barney Hayes, community member, Bill Lowenstein, addiction treatment, Bruce Narden, community member, Jarred Sheets, a member of the clergy, and Marion Villou, a nonprofit. Through sustained effort and commitment, we can build a more inclusive and supportive community where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. I'm going to turn it over to Bill now, who's going to give you some of the numbers we gathered and explain how we got them.
It was really, I think, our job because there hadn't been a homelessness committee. And I think what we did to... As our task is, we really looked at trying to build a foundation for people to build on so that the City of Auburn and the region can effectively address the issue of homelessness. One of the things that we really needed to do was to take a look at what the homeless population in our communities look like. I had some preconceived notions, I will admit, about what our population looked like, who they are and things like that. They're much different, and I'll go into statistics in just a minute. But what we did is we really took a look at three parts of the report. One is to take a look at statistics and data and take a look at what is the population that we're dealing with. Our belief, and my belief, is that when we're dealing with our homelessness situation, what we're really looking at is the tip of the iceberg. What we see publicly is one thing. What exists in our community is a much bigger problem. You know, we see people panhandling. We see people receiving services through, but there is also an undercurrent of people that we don't see, that aren't being served, that really need to be addressed. And then what we did once we did some of that data is we really developed a comprehensive framework to take a look at how we address those issues. My experience in the addiction field is that we use four pillars to look at an issue of addiction: prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery. What we did as a committee is we took those four pillars and modified them to look at the issue of homelessness and how we can address them. My belief is it takes a system to beat a system. And so we really need to look at a comprehensive framework, not that the city needs to be responsible for all pieces of that framework, but as we look at how we address it, we really need to look at a comprehensive program. My experience as the associate director of the Office of Substance Abuse was I got constant calls about we need more detox beds. My experience is if you only build detox beds, you only get people going to detox, and it becomes a revolving door. Unless we have places and stages for people to go, for them to recover, to be able to modify their behavior, their living experiences and whatever, we're always going to have rotating people, the same people, and others using our community resource centers, using our warming centers, using our... using our community resource centers, using our homeless, warming centers, us, using our, um, emergency shelters. And the last part is that we, we developed a set, set of, um, recommendations that really talk about how we can do things differently. So let's take a, a look, and to do that, I need to put my glasses on, to take a look at just what some of the current state of homelessness is. What we've seen i, is that there's a dramatic rise in homelessness, both nationally and here. Um, we have seen, um, dramatic increases in our counts of homelessness. We, um, a point-in-time study is done every January, and it's really a snapshot of like one night or a specific period of time of what our homeless population is. But that only counts the homeless population that people can find to count, to have da, data on. What that data says is, is that there are about two-hundred-and-eighty-one homeless population of people that are homeless, um, in Anderson County. Our local data says things differently. Um, our project support you, um, workers, along, along with Dave and whatever, serviced three-hundred-and-one unduplicated individuals, um, in the course of, of the last year. That doesn't jive with it, I think we're looking at a much larger population. Sasha, Anastasov, that is not and couldn't be here tonight, um, is our liaison to the homeless population through the school department. What we have seen is a four-hundred percent increase in students um, that are homeless or unhoused, needing services, um, in the last five years. In two-hundred, thousand nineteen, there were approximately fifty-eight students that received services. Last year, there were two-hundred-and-thirty-two students, um, that need services and/or were, um, unaccompanied. And an unaccompanied student is a, is a student, uh, and a minor who is not in physical residence with their, um, parent or their custodian. Let, let me take a look at just what, um, s, some of those numbers are. In two thousand eight, fifty-eight students, nineteen were unaccompanied. Two thousand twenty-one to twenty-two, hundred-and-thirteen students, twenty-nine were unaccompanied. Two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four, two-hundred-and-thirty-four students, tw, uh, forty-six of those were, were unaccompanied. What we are talking about is somewhere around thirteen percent of our student population in the city who are either homeless or unhoused. If you take a look at that, that's the equivalent of three students in every one of our classrooms. You know, we typically think of, um, our adult population, but we need to take a look at really families and other pieces that go along with that. There are other pieces around that, but I think when we've, when you take a look at that, and it's all in the report for people to look, so I won't bore you on it, we're looking at, you know, individuals and families. The, the fastest-growing population of homeless in our community today are people sixty-five and over. Um, it, uh, we looked at the data. In June of last year, the average rent in the city of Auburn was thirteen-hundred dollars a month. If you take a look at seniors, my, my peers, um, the average social security, um, payment monthly in the state of Maine is fourteen-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. Multiply that by two, that's about twenty-nine-hundred-and-two dollars. Um, if the average rent is thirteen-hundred dollars a month, that doesn't leave those of us that are seniors with a whole lot to live on. You know, part of what we're looking at too is the problem that, that, um, many of our senior population may want to downsize, may want to move, but there aren't affordable, um, alternatives for them, selling their house and then moving into. So we've got a population out there. We've got a framework of prevention, intervention, treatment, a, and recovery that we, that we've looked at, um, for people to work with. And, and I think one of the things we looked at, in my experience in the addiction field, is that it's a whole lot more cost-effective to look at prevention than it is to treatment. Um, so if we can look at preventing evictions, preventing people becoming homeless, helping people out, whether it's subsidies, whether it's help with it. I've got a two-thousand-dollar car payment, uh, I mean, a car payment, excuse me, a car repair bill, um, and I'm making minimum wage, and I'm trying to support my family. And that month, I just can't make my rent. It would be helpful to develop programs and services so that I'm not ended up being evicted and things like that. And, and so with that, um, you've got a framework there to deal with. What I want to do, um, is to talk just about some of our, our recommendations, if I could. Um, and then we'd be glad to answer any, any questions. First of all, we're, we're an ad hoc committee. We've been meeting for, um, about a year, um, not quite that. Um, and in that period of time, I think the committee also wanted to thank the council, the mayor, and the ci, the city government. Take a look at where we were. A year ago, we didn't have a community resource center. It wasn't even a concept. We weren't looking at the issue of housing first. Um, and we've got a potential proposal for Gammidge and Dennison. Um, I was at the Pleasant Street drop-in this Saturday, um, at the community resource center. They served ninety-eight individuals on Saturday. They have provided over two, twenty thousand meals in the three years that they've been in existence. You know, when I take a look at what we don't, um, what we, what we have now and what we don't have, we've come a long way, and so just wanted to thank and acknowledge that. Also, I think the cooperation between the, the two cities, um, has come a long way. You know, Dave being on both, um, you know, both homelessness committees certainly has been, um, a benefit. We've met with Scott Harriman, um, from the Lewiston City Council and other things, so. But our ad hoc committee is an ad hoc committee. The recommendations for, um, from this committee is that, um, the city of Auburn should establish a permanent homelessness committee. That homelessness committee really should look at the issues of both available housing and the housing issues and the homelessness issue same time. It's hard to separate the two. The major cause of homelessness in our community is the lack of available housing. You know, we can talk about, is it addiction, is it mental health issues, is it medical care? But the, the fact is, we don't have enough roofs to put over people's heads. You know, um, and so we need to look at, at other things. The other thing i, is that the, um, ad hoc committee would be willing to stay on in their ad hoc, um, status until a permanent committee, um, is established, i, if that's the desire of, of the mayor that we serve at presently. Really what we're looking at i, i, is the fact that Auburn shouldn't be doing this all by itself. That I think what we really need to do is develop a strategic regional plan, um, with both Lewiston and, and the county. No one owns the issue of homelessness. You know, it's not one committee's problem, I think it, it's all of us. And we've got a transient homelessness committee, that, I mean, population that's going to move, you know, throughout our communities, and, and so we really need to look at, um, developing a regional issue to do that. That, one of the recommendations i, is, is that, um, during Auburn's comprehensive plan development process, time should, should be allocated to look at the issue of homelessness and where that fits in our comprehensive plan. It, it also impacts our quality of life, our image to other people, and things like that. And so I think it would be beneficial to include that, um, as part of that. We also need to, to increase the, the number of roof, roofs over people's heads. And I think we can look at doing that in a variety of different ways. One of the things we can, we can look at doing a, a, as a possibility i, is if someone comes in and looks at developing units. Say someone comes in a, and is looking at developing a hundred units of housing. Why not mandate that they, that ten percent or whatever of, of the units that they're building be affordable or unattainable housing for people? Um, or look at how we restructure them. Bangor just opened up, um, a dormitory-style housing that I believe has about eighty dorm rooms in it to put people in housing. I don't, I don't think we need to think of, you know, apartment complexes or single-family homes or things like that, that we really need to be creative in how we look at and what we look at, you know, for our housing options. Some of the things that we're looking at, and, and we talked about, i, is that prevention piece. That, um, look at housing first solutions that were already, um, ha, have somewhat in a, in a plan to look at, um, to look at the issues of how we can help people, some rental assistance when they need that. Also looking at, can we have, um, and develop a staff position or staff positions? To look at the issue of homelessness, to look at landlord-tenant relationships, how we can resolve eviction disputes, working with seniors who may want to downsize or at risk of losing their, their housing situations. There are a variety of different things that, that we can look at, and I think try. One of the things that, that we, um, looked at too, and, and that issue of, of seniors, and it's a, it's a personal issue for myself, so I'm in that. I also think we need to look at the, the issues of seniors when we look at any, um, property tax increase or other things, are there tax deferral programs? Are there, are there other things that we can try? You know, I, I think the article in the, was it the paper this morning? You know, talked about issues and, and people getting, um, a double whammy of the, um, rent, uh, the tax stabilization program, I forget the name for it, you know? Um, went, went away for a lot of us. And our assessed values of our properties went up. That's a double whammy for people that, if you're looking at, I'm trying to maintain a household that I don't have a mortgage on, but I'm living on that twenty-nine-hundred dollars a month, um, um, you know, social security income. I don't have a whole lot of options on how to, how to do that. So really just be mindful of, of what impacts would be. One of the other things that we can do, both locally and regionally too, is to address the addition, the, the issue of stigma. Stigma when it comes to homelessness, um, is a real large issue. We look down on people, make real judgments about that. Why can't you get a job? Why can't you do this? There are a lot of reasons why people are homeless. Um, that isn't always for us to judge about why they are there. I think some of it is to provide services and, and a safety net for people, um, when available. And the other thing i, and the last recommendation, I think, is really to look at, pursue other funding opportunities that are out there. Status of funding right now for a lot of us is up in the air. We don't know what's going to happen, um, you know, over the course of the next four years, and just really need to look at, um, a comprehensive and continuing, ongoing, um, programs to really address the issue of homelessness in our community. With that, would be more than glad to entertain any questions or comments.
Questions from the council? No, I really appreciate the work that the committee has done and the recommendations. Uh, I'm assuming Mr. Manager of the Report will, will be available on the website?
Yes, it will.
Yeah, so the report will be available on the website for the public. I appreciate, uh, the copies for the council and look forward to working with the committee in the future to see, uh, how we might, uh, implement recommendations that have come forward. Thanks very much. Thanks very much. Next item will be the first open session of the evening. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council on any issue that's not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening, everybody, uh, my name is Justin Young. I live at nine-five-nine Washington Street North here in Auburn. I'm here tonight, probably not like everybody else, but, uh, with, um, but I, I'm just here to talk about the property that I had bought. Um, I am going to be going to the, um, Board of Appeals as well, but essentially what I'm here to talk about is the property I bought in March twenty-twenty-four. This property was fully inspected to include requesting the city to come out and, uh, have a code officer come out and conduct a site visit in April twenty-twenty-four, shortly after I bought the house, because I had made the intentions clear with the city that I planned to rent out the detached garage and apartment on the property. Charlie D'Angelo, code enforcement officer, came to the property, walked through the garage and the apartment, took photos, and explained some tasks that needed to be completed prior to renting out the property, all of which were permitted and completed. Further questioning with him did not elicit any forms or documents needed to satisfy the city prior to listing it for rent. Furthermore, I called the city later that month and spoke to a code enforcement officer, Tracy, who explained there was nothing else needed and the city is fine with me renting. In May, I rented out the garage for trailer storage, and in November, I rented the apartment to a couple. This building has a complete foundation, electrical system, septic system, insulation, and plumbing system connected to the city's water. This building has had dozens of contractors conducting work throughout the years. Yet, ten months later, this January, the city realized they have no permits for this property. Code enforcement officer Jennifer Mills, whose attitude is inexcusable, came to my property without notifying me, nor with my presence, walked through the property, took photos, and built a list of violations. Of the eight violations listed, three of which were already scheduled and awaiting contractor work. Some have now been fixed. Two, said the city has no permits nor certificate of occupancy on file for the property. I'm not sure how that's possible with all the contractor work that's been done, but. Two, requested that fifteen-year-old property's electrical and plumbing system be brought to today's code as a result of the city not having the permits on file. One is accusing me of using the garage for commercial purposes, or commercial business, which is not true. This could have been clarified had she contacted me and not trespassed on my property. My realtor and I have viewed and confirmed all tax documents, the tax card and the buyer's disclosure, along with other documents, and it shows the apartment and garage on file. Yet the city does not have this anywhere in their records. I have requested Jennifer Mills to clarify the violations and even come to my property and personally walk me through what needs to be completed to satisfy the city. Again, I had done this when I first bought the property. Even contractors I'm trying to hire right now are confused by her demands. Instead, I've been met with arguments in the city hall and condescending emails with little clarification. Other than safety hazards, which none have been pointed out to me, I will not be fixing or altering or paying contractors tens of thousands of dollars to completely tear apart and alter this living space to cover up the city's loss of past records. In other words, this is exploitation of a first-time homebuyer who lawfully did their due diligence and is now having the full force of the city find me and put me in violation for their record management issues, which they're now trying to cover up and push the cost onto me. Like I said, I'm going to be going to the Board of Appeals. I am requesting the city grandfather me into this pre-existing property or cover all the contractor fees to bring this space up to today's code. Otherwise, I do have a copy of the violation notice, and I have my contact information and all of what I, what I just said on this paperwork. If anybody would like a copy, I can give it to somebody, but, um, again, I don't expect anybody to do anything right now, but I'm going to be bringing this to the Board of Appeals, so.
Yeah, if you have documents, you can provide them to the clerk, she'd be happy to take them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public who'd like to address the council? Please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. We'll move on to new business. The first item is Order one-seven-zero-two-one-eight-two-zero-two-five, accepting the report by the Ad hoc Homeless Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Gary, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Walker. Any discussion by the council? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor, opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is Order eighteen-zero-two-eighteen-two-zero-two-five, action regarding property, uh, excuse me, poverty abatement case number P A two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-one. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Wisner, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Walker. Is there any discussion? Counsel ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands, all those in favor? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is a public hearing only. This is a public hearing for the CDBG and Home Consortium Action Plan for Program Year The community, excuse me, Business and Community Development Department has brought forward the public hearing to conform with the housing and urban development requirements. They will be providing a community needs survey that can be found on the city website and they will be sending postcards to each residential address in the city requesting feedback for the community needs survey. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on the CDBG Home Consortium Action Plan for Program Year 2025, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the public hearing will be closed. We'll move on to reports. So for Mayor's report, I have a couple short items. Last week, I attended a tenant meeting at Parker Arms with Greg Whitney. He's the chair of the board for the drop-in center to meet with the tenants, to hear any concerns and answer any questions they had. Overall, I think it was a very positive meeting. There was a couple dissatisfied folks. We took note of their concerns and passed them on to the staff at the drop-in center and at Community Development. Like I said, overall, it was very positive. Lot of support amongst the tenants. A number of tenants have signed up to volunteer or provide food for the drop-in center. Also, I wanted to extend my thanks to Mr. Brincheck for Economic Development. He's continuing to run the monthly manufacturers meetings. I attended the last one, very informative meeting regarding the effects of tariffs on our manufacturing sector. You know, there's a lot up in the air right now, but I think there's a lot of concern among manufacturing businesses in the city about the potential negative effects on their business and for some of them, potential impact on growth plans that they have here in Auburn. So that's all I have. Counsel Gary?
I sort of don't have a report, but a couple meetings ago, I had got a suspension of rules to, to put on the agenda dealing with homeless or warming place rather. And we were all agreed that 121 Mill Street should be the place. Since then, what has the city's plans now been to open the places when it gets real, like sub below zero?
So my, my, the manager can follow up on this as well. My understanding is that the policy was reviewed and edited to take into account a warming center, not just for the cold and storm-related. That would be 121 Mill Street and based on the criteria and the policy, I think on one occasion, that has been opened and city staff opened the building and there were volunteers there that day from East Auburn Baptist Church, providing some food and beverages for the guests. Mr. Manager, anything further?
No, I think that's, that's it. As you know, we did not have, you know, much of a turnout on that day. I think that systems need to be in place for, to assist in transportation. Now that the drop-in center is open on Wednesdays and Saturdays, there's more of an understanding of the facility, where it's located and, and availability. We also talked about making the, the space available on Sundays that seemed, during the day, that seemed to be where there was a shortage. Since then, we have identified that there is a service currently being provided in the city of Lewiston that's providing a breakfast and a lunch. And so, because of the proximity of, from the overnight shelter, that most would stay right in that vicinity during the day on Saturday, on Sunday. And so, it, it would really be, we would need to see some lack of service being provided on that Sunday and certain conditions to really be able to stand up that center. We have a MOU with the drop-in center that if we provide them seventy-two-hour notice prior to that Sunday, if we see that weather shifting, that they will assist in opening up the space. We still need to bring in the volunteers for food and, and other services. They're just creating that space and being available. So that's the plan moving forward. I think we'll continue on that track. And then obviously, if the council decides to do something long-term, that's a financial matter that the council will need to take up in the budget and determine how best to meet that need in the future. Currently, that's the safeguard that we have in place.
Do we have some funds or emergency funds we can use to open up the center? Say like on Thursday or Friday or Monday or Tuesday, whenever the weather forecast is sub below or freezing temperatures, especially first thing in the morning, especially for those that stay on the Auburn side and have no way to get to the places in Lewiston. They may not have bus fare and they may have stuff that makes it impossible for them to get to their Kaden's Kitchen Overnight Center.
You know, I think that council will have to give some direction on this. You're currently competing with other nonprofit organizations that are providing the service that we know of at least seven days a week. And so it's really, council, a discussion and a decision you need to make on, do you want to provide that? Do you want to provide it as far as what my recommendation would be is outsourcing that to an organization to provide that? This isn't, we don't have the staff to be able to staff that or the capacity for consistent volunteer programming. That's what the drop-in center does, that's what Trinity Jubilee Center does, that's what these other organizations are currently doing and providing, and there's individuals that are equipped to be able to provide the appropriate services for our unhoused community. So, so my, my, my direct answer would be, no, not currently. If the council directs that for us to make that happen, then we will work with other organizations to do that. The question is, is there funds? You have emergency funds that as a council, you can allocate for any purpose. And so if the council chose to do that, you could, I'd really recommend us taking a look at what current organizations are providing, but understanding that their models are working because of either funding that they've received or capacity. A lot of it has to do with capacity. Drop-in center has X amount of volunteers. What's their capacity to do more than that? Right now, they do what they're doing very well on Wednesdays and Saturdays and they're meeting that need in the community.
Anything further, Counsel Gary?
One parting shot. What's open in Auburn? I know there's agencies and things open in Lewiston, but what do we have working on our side of the river?
I provided that in net memo and I think we're moving into a workshop item here, Mr. Mayor. This, it's consistently that we have a drop-in center now at the Community Resource Center on Wednesdays and Saturdays. That's the program that we, that we have partnered with, with the drop-in center and, and nothing further.
Counsel Whiting?
Just like, excuse me, I'd like to congratulate a resident of Schooner Estates, Josie Usden, who turned a hundred on February 5th. She refers to it as 2525.
Counsel Callen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take an opportunity to thank my coworkers and committee members from the Ad Hoc Committee, Bill and David. Thank you for representing us this evening. It's been a lot of, a lot of learning and, and a lot of growth there for sure. And I think to your questions, Counsel Gary, it, it highlights the needs of one of our recommendations. There's still a lot of work to identify, you know, planning and coordinating, because there's a lot of people that are interested in helping or are helping and how we, how we do that and continue to check on. Well, it's a work in progress and I think what we have is, is good and we'll keep adapting as we go. So that's it.
Counsel Mills?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Counsel Wisner?
Nothing tonight.
Counsel Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. February 25th, we have a meet-in at Rolleys Diner, United New Auburn Association, six o'clock. And the Neighborhood Watch meet-in will be at the Sixth Street Congregational Church on February 27th, which will be Thursday night at six o'clock. Everyone is welcome to both. And I'd also like to announce that the Valentine's luncheon went very well. We had a hundred and ten people. Nobody walked away hungry, I can tell you that for sure. And we're very, very happy that we pulled off another year of celebrating that day. So thank you to the city and thank you to all the volunteers that made it happen.
Thank you. Counsel Platt?
Thank you. Just a reminder to everybody that there is no school committee meeting this week on account of school vacation. And my second announcement is actually a cool development. I've been sitting on a, it's a non-official committee, not necessarily related directly to the city, but something at Lost Valley called the Lost Valley Trail Network Group. And it's just a bunch of interested trail enthusiasts, representatives from local businesses, from the high school, from any, all sorts of groups that like trails. And anyways, sponsored by Lost Valley and their great trail network, they're trying to drum up lots of local and community-built efforts to improve that trail network. And as of last week, Bob Brainard, through some of his sources, was able to contribute a $10,000 grant check to start the process for, for that. The design of this is not to place any burden on any municipal entities. This is supposed to be a community-driven effort, a grant-driven effort, and the idea is to create, to start what would be a professionally-built 5K course so that high schools, colleges, members of the community would have an official place to go and at least for the high school and college events. That's not a venue that we have in the Twin Cities. And that could, it could be a huge draw for this city. So it's very slow-moving, nothing is official, it's not a city-sponsored thing, but community members are getting involved and there's some really good groundwork being made. So kudos to Lost Valley, to, to Bob Brainard and to everybody else involved with that effort.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have one item. The, you'll see at your, at your seats, you have this new resident guide packet. Really thrilled with the work that was done by our, our communications director and her team. I think you'll find it's very informative. We have this now available down in the tax office. We'll be handing these out any new resident comes in. Most of our new residents, we're able to identify through registering vehicles, changing of addresses, that kind of information. We'll be making sure that we'll hand out these as well as a little welcome to Auburn bag with other information. And so, great job from the team on, on getting that together and it's also available on our website.
Thank you. Ms. Earl, finance report?
Hello again. I think this is the most I've spoken to you all in quite some time. So this is the January finance report. I will note, even though it's not noted here, that we are all caught up with the school imports, exports, so I don't have to make a little asterisk on that and do the additional comparisons, so that's great news. Two notes on the revenue side. The state and local road assistance line, if you're looking at the detail, that's yet to be received from the state as of January. We do have it now, so it's noted in the January report, but it is in the February report. So just so you're aware, we have received that. And overall, the finance revenue collections and reimbursements are 3.6% higher than in the same period last year. It's fairly significant based on the current economic state. So it's a combination of fewer delinquent taxpayers, which is great. There's additional excise from newer vehicles and we've had increased reimbursements from the state. Again, we've talked about how we don't expect that to continue rising at that rate, but it's great for us for this current budget year. The expenditures, we're at 54.6% of the budget compared to 59.3% at the same time last year. So overall, the difference is fairly negligible, but the implementation of efficiencies coupled with some staff vacancies have created that savings in the expense lines and you'll see those in several of the departments if you're looking at those individual lines. Take my thumb off so I can switch the page here. I did include an investment schedule for you all, so you can see what we currently have invested and our average interest rate at this time is 3.71%. So not as good as it's been in previous, previous years, but still looking fairly healthy, which is great news for us as well. Lot of general fund pages here. So moving on to the arena, they are at an operating net loss of $15,264. We are in the middle of their operations in season, so we expect that as usual to change. It's not abnormal for that to look like this at this time of year. As for their expenditures, same thing, they're right on par with where they should be at this time of year. Nothing of, of note to be concerned about. Their insurance premiums did exceed their budgeted amount because their contract was not signed until after the budget was in place. For this year, that contract is already being negotiated and we will have that rate before the budget is set, so we won't run into that again. Trying to actually talk to you all instead of just saying, any questions? Nothing? So the Ingersoll Turf facility, the operating revenues are at 61.9% compared to 50.2% in previous year. They're doing really well. They have an operating gain year-to-date of $109,427. So all of those programs are actually helping us out. We've had a lot of participation in a lot of those. You'll see that on the report as well. Their operating expenses are about 26% of budget as compared to 24.65% for last year. A lot of those expenditures have been moved back and forth over the years, in rec, out of rec, special revenue, not special revenue, so hard to compare, but looking at each of those pieces in reports, like I said, they are actually in a really healthy state, which is great news for that facility. Now I'll say, do you have any questions?
Any questions for the finance director?
Yeah, just one related to Ingersoll, my recollection, so please confirm if I'm, the year-to-date average was for five years? I'm just noting that in your, your graph.
Yeah, so we have a current year and then year-to-date FY '24 and then the three previous averaged.
So just wanted to point out that we've gone up, we continue to see an increase, so great work on the, the folks at Ingersoll. Thank you.
Counsel Platt?
Yeah, I guess just a question on Ingersoll. If, I, I understand what we're kind of doing with the books here. We're not, we're not necessarily hiding expenses, but they exist somewhere else. I'm just reading this line that some exist in Recreation Department and some under Public Works. If revenues continue to grow in that budget center, why wouldn't we bring all expenses under that budget center so that we can actually? I mean, I get it, we can see, you know, if we're at $100,000 year-to-date, $130,000, $150,000, we can see if we've grown year to year, but being up $100,000 means nothing because we're not up $100,000. We've got debt service, we've got salaries, we've got... Is there any reason to bring that all under one report so we can kind of get the real vision of it?
So much in the way that the arena is a business account for governmental accounting purposes. The Ingersoll Turf facility is similar because of the way their program income is done. So those expenses that are related to this are associated with that business-type activity. So that's what the comparison is, is for the business-type revenues and business-type expenditures. So there are revenues and expenditures that aren't necessarily business-type, so it's a, it's a mix, which makes that a little bit difficult, but because it's business-type, we do have to account for it separately in that manner.
Other questions or comments? Is there a motion to accept the report?
Motion to accept.
Moved by Counsel Walker, seconded by Counselor Whiting. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative, none in negative, the motion's adopted. We'll move on to the We'll move on to the second open session of the evening. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
You might be surprised, my name is John Cleveland, I live at 183 Davis Avenue. I wanted just to take a moment because I think it was important. I took the time to read the homeless report from beginning to end, and I wanted to compliment the committee that put together that report. Very comprehensive, very complete, very specific recommendations, good databases to work from, and it was a good piece of work that they did, and I think they need an op- a compliment for that. I also want to compliment Mayor and others who put together the committee because I think it was an important thing to do. I don't think we always got the same focus or leadership that this important issue has gotten, and I think this provides a wonderful basis to make some informed judgments on a very important issue in this community, on how to move forward to address that issue. Clearly, we all understand this isn't just a local part issue, it isn't just for the city government to do all by themselves. It states that in there, and there must be cooperation with many different partners from the federal, state, local, county area to do that, but it's a beginning to start with, and I I really want to emphasize that. I hope there's an opportunity to continue on with the great recommendations that are being uh recommended here. I also noted that there were recommendations in regards to the comprehensive plan and to some zoning issues that they thought would be helpful in regards to this issue. As a member and the chair of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, I've made a note to make sure that we bring that up at the comp plan discussions as they go forward because they do integrate into the comp plan um that the city will be looking for at the end of that process as well. So thank you for a good start, and I really encourage all of you to read it, and I really encourage all the citizens in Auburn to read it. It's going to be on the website. Take a look at it. It's an easy read, it identifies the problem, and I'd also encourage citizens to volunteer and help. This is something that everybody could do something with. The drop-in center is always looking for people to help, so everybody can participate, everybody can do something regardless of their uh resources or situation in this community. Everybody can make a few muffins and help out at the drop-in center. So my compliments to a good start.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the community that would like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. Uh, for the public that's following along, the executive session on the agenda is dealt with uh in between the work session and the start of the meeting. Uh, there's no further business to come before the council. Is there a motion for adjournment? Yes, Counsel Walker?
Yeah, I I would like to just uh put a big thank you out to Public Works. It was a long weekend plus holiday and everything, and they they did one heck of a job throughout this city. I was out traveling around and not only in the city of Auburn, but all around it, and Auburn was probably the best roads to be able to go out and travel, because there was some that, you know, were quite nasty, that liquid salt or whatever they put down is not the nicest stuff to try to travel in. But we, and even today and yesterday, with having a sidewalk plows out in the downtown areas made it possible to be able to at least walk in the downtown areas, and I noticed today they were trying to get out further and further and with no school. I was surprised that they got that much done, but they all worked their tails off and they all need a big thank you.
Thank you. Uh, if there's nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, the council will be adjourned.